Two weeks pregnant, so I might not be at the next one.
Is this a play for sympathy?
No, 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 no.
You want to blow the dates?
Yeah, she might be in the hospital in the next one, so let's go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. What's your feeling? You want to say your piece and then decide what to do?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we'll go in the order of the agenda, and you folks are up first. Kate Quimmo, who is not here for reasons that may be obvious, and Esther Swartz.
Dr. Beauty.
No, Willoughby is our secretary tonight. Now, you both have coverage and FAR, which is...
Yes.
The first letter that went out did not make that clear.
Yeah.
I'm not sure any of them are on, but with such a small roof.
Oh, I didn't know.
You know, they try to televise these things, and that may or may not...
I thought they used it for... Douglas McFlure for the paper, and Mitchell Swartz at 29 Willow Street. My clients are looking to put on a 28 square foot, former addition, at the back of their house. Had a new kitchen and a master bathroom, master bedroom and bath suite upstairs. And because of that, we are over coverage. The house is pretty existing, nonconforming on coverage. I put together a quick analysis based on assumptions about the neighborhood. I will hand you that. That's okay?
Sure.
The second page is sort of a key map to the different properties.
Thank you.
A couple of things. Our coverage increase from existing is only 10.4%. There's an existing patio in the back that we're taking out, and existing side path that we're moving. So we tried to balance out the coverage as best we could. We are also in a unique situation. The attic has an existing stair that goes up to it. But the ceiling height is only five foot four. But that doesn't matter because we have an existing stair going up. We have to include 50% of our attic as FAR. If it had a hatch, we wouldn't have to include any of it. It's not habitable space. So that kind of increases our FAR a little bit, which I call that break.
How much? What's the number that you're going to have to calculate?
That's 408 square feet. If you look at the chart for the neighborhood, a little over half, or about half of the properties exceed FAR in ranges from 105% to 168%. So we are looking for a 114%, which is a 14% over allowable. Similarly, on the coverage, the majority of the properties in this area also exceed coverage by a similar range. The other unique part of our property is while we do have neighbors to the north, which is 27?
Twenty-three.
Sorry, 23 Maple. To the south, it's empty. It's actually school property, so we're not actually affecting neighbors on that side.
You said 23 Maple. You mean 23 Willow, right?
Sorry, 23 Willow. Yes, 23 Willow. And as you can see there, actually 173.6% over on FAR. The other thing I would like to point out is from the front. Well, you can't see because it's black and white, but the front, where we actually have no effect with the building. And the back is that tall row of edges. So basically, there's no effect on the street.
Okay. I mean, I went around, went to the house Monday after I flew out of town, and there was nobody there. So I didn't get to meet anyone involved. But I did notice that in the back, sort of on the southeastern side, there is a gap in the trees, if you will. There's a very big line of coverage around the back, except for this one, I don't know, four-foot area.
On the facing the school.
Facing the school, sort of facing a little diagonally away from the school, but in that general direction. Don't worry, mate.
Yes.
It struck me without predicting what would happen on the merits of this. If this were to go through, you would have to include something in the shrubbery to close that gap. Your client is not even there, so...
We certainly can. But that's something the planning board may or may not suggest, too, as we finish with them.
What do you have left with that?
We have to get approval from you. They had a list of some engineering issues, which we've actually already pressed. But they referred us to you so we could get our variances and then go back for our final public hearing.
And you're representing to us? There are no substantive issues left, the planning board?
No, the only issues they had were some drainage issues.
They can be substantive?
They, well, they did not have the complete engineering set of drawings at the time. I've since submitted them to the village engineer, and everything's pretty much okay.
You mentioned that I see the 168% on the FAR at...
23 Willow.
It's actually 14 Willow. 23 Willow is 173, right?
Yes, you see that?
That coverage, though, they're within the limits on coverage, right?
At 23 Willow, yeah. 23 Willow is actually, if you look at the key map, it's actually a wider lot. It's sort of, these are all like, I don't know how, lots are little strips, so most of the lots are two strips. 23 is three, so it has more area for coverage. Which is always an interesting thing. If you have a bigger lot, it's easier to get your coverage than your FAR.
I see what you're saying. The items that you're taking out to get your coverage, which I calculate as being 34% over.
34% over.
Yeah.
So, well, it is, it's 34% over allowable, but it's only 10% over existing.
Okay. No, I don't disagree with that. But the way you get to the only 10% over existing is by, in part, by taking out the walk-in patio that go around the north side of the house, which are frankly pretty...
Diminimus?
They're diminus, and they're in the ground.
True.
So the bulk, the bulk is obviously that your proposal is quite different.
Yes.
And what you would be taking out, and they're also not very good repair, frankly.
But coverage has its coverage in the village, so...
I'll give you that, but you're, even after the removal of the walk-in patio, you're still 34% over, which is not a small number.
Correct.
Another question I had, I can't tell on the proposed terrace, how would that be constructed?
It's angry. So it's bluestone and stone dust, and it's just a pack rate patio.
You're talking about the patio?
The new patio.
Well, they call it a terrace, and I was going to add, too.
Here it says new flagstone patio. We're talking about the same thing?
Yes.
I'm looking on the first page. Right. Okay. So there's no difference?
Yeah, it's the same thing. Okay.
So terrace on page two is the same as patio on picture one?
Yes.
Doesn't mean it's raised anymore.
Yeah.
When did the present owners buy the house?
September.
I think that cuts someone against you. Rebuying a house and then immediately seeking to expand it is not...
Why should that cut against you?
I will tell you, we have a comprehensive plan work going on in Irvington, and I've been seeing through those things. And the number of times I have heard comments, negative comments, about, more often about people building a house up to the maximum coverage and other figures, and then coming in a few months later, seeking a full or something additional. That, I think it's fair to say, is not well received among...
That's understandable.
This is, this is a little different, but it's not, I mean, the house was purchased already over in coverage.
Correct.
And simply to be adding on, you know, within a year after, after the purchase, it seems to me, you know, whether, whether or not the applicant family knew about the restrictions at the time, they have to be taken into account.
Of course, but in this neighborhood and as in the village, if you look at the context, the majority of the houses are in pre-existing, nonconforming conditions. So it's, and it's not unusual for people to want to expand and ask for variances on that in the village.
I think, I think there's something in what you say, but I, I will just tell you, if there are future references and nothing else, that when you have clients who buy a house and then shortly want to expand it, that is generally not as well received.
Understandable, but if the whole neighborhood has been notified and none of the neighborhood shows up, is that an issue, it may be an issue village-wide, but if it's not an issue neighborhood-wide, why should that affect it in their neighborhood?
Well, that's one of the things we have to be concerned about, because one of the issues is, will this set a precedent for others in the neighborhood, so they can do the same thing?
Understood.
And that, I mean, some of the houses...
But hasn't that precedent already been set, for instance, their direct neighbor to the north? As the house was not always as big as it is now, across the street, down a few blocks. But many of the houses in that area already set the precedent to be expanded.
Well, that's, I think that's true, although I must say, going around, I didn't get the same impression of the neighborhood in terms of mass of houses and so forth. I mean, they're all, it's a very nice neighborhood. And a number of the houses are, they may, they may have been added on to after they were first built, but not many have the degree of mass, if I can put it that way, that this house would have after the proposed addition. Just doesn't have that impact usually that they come around. Where'd you get these numbers, by the way?
There is a project in front of the planning board now that had a chart that I started with, and then I referred to the Greenberg property zoning list and tried to extrapolate them from there. Obviously, a lot of it is guesswork on everyone's part. I'm assuming most of the houses are 50% attic, but I can't know. Some of them may have all accents. I know I've, well, similar. For basements, I assume there was, most of the basements were underground, so I didn't count any of the basements. And then I looked where I could. I had, I knew, I had the drawings for our neighbors next door, so I was able to look at their exact requests from when they came in front of the zoning board a few years ago. So I, as best I could, I put them together.
What's their attic situation? Do you remember?
They, I think they have 50% attic. No, I'm sorry. I don't think they have an attic.
There's one other provision in the code that we always have to ask you to address, and that is, we are required in considering a application for variance, to grant the variance that is least expansive. Can you address that?
Well, we...
Why this is that variance?
If you look at the plan itself, we, bedroom suite is actually smaller than one of the bedrooms that's in the house now. We really tried to keep it as tight as possible and still make it a, you know, a nice bedroom and a very minimal bathroom and closet. Similarly, the kitchen is not... The kitchen isn't out of scale with the rest of the house, similar sized rooms to the rest of the rooms that are permitting existing in the house.
What's, what's the number of the page you're looking at, the bottom right corner?
A 1.1 and a 1.2. But we were keeping... The second is what we really tried to rein that in as tight as possible, and gave us our footprint for the first floor. So you're looking at a bedroom that's... Fancy with master bedroom by any means.
And that's in the addition that you proposed, right?
Correct. The, there's a front room right now that their family is expanding. The front room right now, on the northwest corner, even though it counts as an existing bedroom, it's, I'm sure you've seen this in other houses, it's a very, very small room. And it's fine for a nursery, but for his child, brothers, it's a little bit awkward. So this actually allows them to have two decent rooms for their children.
And on a A 1.1 or 1.2, if you can, what, what the new construction will be?
So the new construction, the new addition is this shaded in area.
Okay.
There is some free area inside the house, which we...
And the pipe zone patio, where is there an entrance to that, from the dining room?
No, from the kitchen. There's a door next between the refrigerator and the stairs. You step out onto a little path and move over to the right. And actually, this plan should have been changed. It still shows the path on this plan, but that's what's on the site plan is correct. We are not going to continue the plan, the path over that way. That'll just be like soon as you step out from the kitchen door, and then this little patio area over to the stairs. South side.
One other question before I turn you over to the mercies of our colleagues here. On page SP2...
Yes.
Looking at the drawing of the attic, sort of in the, maybe the second column?
Yes.
There's a reference at the top, cathedral ceiling doesn't exceed 12 feet in height?
Yes, if you exceed 12 feet in height from the cathedral up, you double the area of the floor below. So you get a penalty for having a cathedral ceiling. So we're sloping it down to keep the peak of that ceiling below 12 feet.
Okay. It is not 12 feet, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And is it then a cathedral ceiling at all?
Yes, because a typical ceiling will be eight feet. So we'll follow, we'll slope it up maybe another two or three feet, just to get some height.
I see. But it doesn't hit 12 feet at any floor. Okay. Other questions or comments? No. I think that between the coverage and the FAR, I think FAR is sort of the sticking point, as far as I'm concerned. But having said that, I suppose you could deal with the coverage by cutting back the proposed terrace or the patio. I'm not suggesting that as a condition necessarily, just making it as an observation.
I would, I understand the FAR seems large as a number. But I think if you look at the volume of the house, it won't look, it won't look out of scale with the house neighborhood. It's just a simple L. It has the same roof pitch. It has the same material. It has always been there. So I'm not sure how much of an actual effect, any effect we have on the neighborhood.
Well, and if your drawing here is correct, it also doesn't go much beyond the house next door.
Correct, which is something we were also trying to be conscious of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I noticed that from the, from the perspective outside the other day, too. I'm flustered by the fact that the two gentlemen on my left are silent. This almost never happens.
I think that this is a reasonable addition to this lot.
That almost never happens either. Okay. No other comments? Any questions?
Yes.
Forced it out of you. Anyone else want to be heard out there? Okay. Unconditioned, then you do fill in that gap in the shrubbery in the back. I've got to say, this one gave me a lot of consternation. I had to think about this one quite a bit. And I was trying to sort of perplexify the silence of my colleagues because I wanted to hear what they had to say. But my feeling is, although this is close, it's well thought out. You sort of answered the questions that I had. And I must say, I'm surprised, frankly, at the FAR numbers, at the coverage numbers that attributed to the other houses. I'm not saying you're wrong, but it's a big, this is a big part of why I am sort of...
It's interesting. This neighborhood, the three streets, the villages, and parts of East Irvington, a lot of the houses, I've done a lot of work on a lot of these houses. They don't appear as big as they appear when you break down the numbers. And I can't, some of that is, you know, we count attics in a big way, or the basement is three feet above grade. But I'm always surprised when I do FAR coverage calculations, that a house will be, it either closer to the limit or over the limit. It's, it's, in these neighborhoods, they seem right because the context looks right. I think there's bigger than you think there are.
Did you run these by the building inspector?
No.
Or anyone in the village?
No. I tried to make them up.
Oh, I, I'm not even, I'm not even suggesting that, although, you know, when you, when you tell us, as you did very candidly, that you have to make estimates and guesses about what people have in their attic, whether they have stairs or something else, I mean, that obviously affects the inclusion of...
It's a lovely thing if your village somehow has a running table of all this. I think would make it a lot easier for everyone, but...
Like it's hard with this? You could give it to them?
Yeah. I actually think Ferguson Mulholland probably has a better running table.
Is there any trust issues, do you think you're saying? Let me ask you to comment on this, and I'm asking this because the numbers you have on these sheets are pretty influential, I think, in the result. Would you have an objection, would you be willing, to take this document to Ed Merrim and to ask him not to, you know, go through every number and vet them, but to give us an idea of whether or not, in general, this is a fair representation of what the FAR and coverage numbers are in this community?
You mean to lay the decision?
Well, I would even think, even think of, assuming I would make a motion to approve the application. If that was passed, I would make it a subject to condition. You know, I wouldn't, and I'm not...
So just a couple of points about the neighborhood in terms of precedents that this board has set over the past three years. I looked at the minutes just from the past three years. And there are, there were two houses that came before the board, one with FAR of 19.6 over and one with coverage of 35% over.
Which, which two of those?
23 Willow, and again, I think that that was at the, at the time what they had been and been building over. And then 30 Station.
30 Station is under on coverage.
Sorry, on FAR.
And which was the one that was over on...
In 23 Willow, it's under, or just right on coverage.
Right.
But substantially over on...
Yes, substantially over on FAR.
You're basing your...
Bottom line is, though, I mean, the, these numbers were actually discussed at the last planning board for that other project, is where we took these numbers from.
Probably several of them.
Yeah. And Ed was there, so I, I mean, I don't have any sort of objection running by him, he saw it the other day.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I would, I would articulate it this way, that I will make a motion to approve the application.
Okay.
Subject to the condition of filling in, filling in the shrubbery in the back. And also subject to a overview of this document, which we did just receive today.
I understand.
Yeah.
And that other project not come up at the planning board. And I haven't, I've been able to use that as a, as a starting point to go look. I haven't had this.
Yeah, I understand. A subject to review by the liability inspector for the general appropriateness of these statistics. Assuming that he does give that kind of consent, that kind of approval, then he would be approved without a certain condition. But I would like him to see these numbers ahead of time. Okay? That would be my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Move up to the right, John.
Before, before, I just want to ask, what will we expect to see from...
Yeah, what, yeah, same question.
Okay. I mean, I would expect, Ed's not a very formidable guy.
You know, I agree with you that I would like some kind of verification, but I'm not sure what...
So if I go in, talk to Ed tomorrow, and say, Ed, you know, we put these together based on this, this, and this, will you take a look at them and tell Bruce if you think they're realistic or...
Oh, except in rain. Oh, except that, either of those. Yeah.
Okay.
But what if he says, well, yeah, some of these are right, but you know, this one really overstates or understates.
I think if he does that, we've got to look at it.
So I can tell you...
I mean, we're mostly concerned about the ones that are close by and over.
Correct.
How far we're basing our decision. So I would say that if any of those are, if he thinks any of those are significant... if he thinks any of those are significant, they're going to overstate it. I want to know that.
Correct. I will say that, so the chart that first sent me thinking to do this had the numbers for this house too low, because I had just done all the calculations. And then, so that's where I started. Then I went to the ones that I could find, and I knew about specifically the one next door. It had them too low. So I think the assumptions that on the chart that I base this on were actually very conservative.
Okay.
But I understand.
Yeah, please. Okay, I have a second, John?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to drag this out, but twenty-three Willow, I think, is key here. What if he says, oh, no, that's way, that's way, the FAR is way high. It's more like 150%.
I think we will have to wait and see what he says rather than deal with the hypotheticals. I mean, I would say personally, if it's 150 instead of 173, and you're looking for 114, I'm not bothered by it.
Right, yes, yes.
But accepting your hypothetical is the real answer.
So we think it is conceivable that he'll say it's not 173, it's 120?
Yeah, that's, that's the question, that kind of a range. And some of the other numbers here frankly surprise me too, because as I said, many, well, many of the houses are under 100% of either one or the other or both. I mean, 21 Oak is at 58, 68%. Those are people who respect the law.
There are also, I think if you look at the streets down there, there are some houses that have, in the past eight years, had substantial work done to them, and there's some houses that have not turned over. And I think that's where you see a lot of these.
Right, I understand the difference. Okay. Any other questions or comments on my motion as condition? All right, John?
Although yes.
Although yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll discuss.
I've got to fly, yeah, I've got to fly to Savannah first thing Friday morning, but I'll be back for the weekend, so Friday's the only day.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll go in tomorrow.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Good luck with all your events.
Please.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, they were attached. Yes.
Was it? I didn't, I did not cut that out.
Tom can always get special considerations. Attention to your letter, right? Do I have that?
Thank you.
I want to make a preliminary remark that should not come as a surprise. I talked to your colleague, Lino, the other day, and he was, he was saying he couldn't be here because he had some pre-existing appointment, which seems to be the case for a lot of people tonight.
So it was very convenient.
Yeah. But what I was raising with him was the question, because your, your submission goes on at exclusive length, not too much length, but exclusively to address the area variance issue. And I don't think you have an area variance issue. I think it's a use variance issue. You're not asking to expand perimeters, to have other FAR numbers or anything of that sort. You're asking to have residential property in the first floor in this district when the approved use is commercial. So I, I myself see this as a use variance issue. Lino obviously did not send me a writing telling me what a brilliant thought that was, but he did say he understood my point and it might be, it might be valid. I presume he told you that before you wandered in here to...
He has, yes.
I'm glad you said that, because I thought maybe I was missing something.
Okay.
I should perhaps circulate that thought.
No, that's fine.
Our argument that it's an area variance and not a use variance is that a residential unit is a permitted use within the business district. However, the location of that use is restricted to the second floor or the floor block curb level, and that really, since it is permitted use, permitted use, we're seeking an area variance to communicate with the residence on the first floor or whatever. But, you know, as I understand, I'm here tonight to gauge your board's thoughts on that application. If need be, we can adjourn and...
Come up with some more evidence of some sort.
More information or use variance. One question, if we do do that, we've noticed this public hearing refers to area variance. We were submitted an application for use variance. Should we withdraw this application and re-notice an application for use?
I think probably the safer answer is yes.
Or at least supplement it.
Yeah.
And say, and/or one or the other, I guess.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure anyone looking at your notice would necessarily react differently because it was one rather than the other, but...
Right. Not much of it's opposite to this.
Now, now, tell me, you've got, you've got nine and 11 together.
That's right.
Describe what nine and 11 are, who was in there, you don't give us names, but...
Sure. I have with me tonight Mr. Frank Sal, one of the proprietors of the Malley Corp.
Good evening.
He might be better off after.
One is empty for the last, almost a year now. I have three bare rooms, and it's empty on the market, you know, to rent though, and it's empty. Downstairs, I've been trying for the last 10 years to rent as a commercial, but I have no phone call. I have nothing. Boy, I had one kid who wanted to do karate, and then I was not, he was just a young kid, and I refused, you know, to have, to have a headache, you know. So, I mean, for the last 10 years, I don't know what to do with a property, you know, in other words, to get some rental, you know. But I have one tennis right now, you know, which is...
It's specific to, to building number nine.
Building nine.
Where at the curb level, it's currently empty.
Empty, the one on the top's empty.
It's empty as well.
There's empty one.
And then 11.
11 is rented.
And 11 in the back of the property.
Just, just as lush and ripe. There's nine and 11, and then is the fourth floor downstairs. The office is downstairs.
Now, gentlemen have cards?
They do.
Do you have a card?
Uh, no, I don't have one.
Would you mind writing your client's name or card, just for the record?
May I, good question, since I'm so relatively new here. What, what is the rationale for restricting the use of retail space for residents? I understand what the rule is, but what, one expects things to go the other way typically. People want to put retail in what is a residence, and people don't like that. But what's the motivation for...
Thank you very much. I don't know the original thinking, but I know the rule of that.
Right.
But having in light of this application of on up and down Main Street, it seems to be uniformly the case that there's a commercial property, the first floor, a residential upstairs, or it's an entirely residential building, one family. I mean, there are...
So exceptions. I just, I'm not from Irvington, but I took a walk down from 85 Main to 9 Main and back up, and I can't, I didn't distinguish between whole one-family houses, but I just counted the number, what I believe to be, from the sidewalk level to be residences on curb level, and I counted 16. I don't know how many of those have always been residences on curb level, but it might behoove us to do a little research to see if any have been granted in recent years.
I don't, I don't remember this issue coming up. I'll tell you that. I know, at least on Main Street in my time, which is a few, a few years.
I had the same reaction walking around, but I, it didn't occur to me to try to figure out whether they were single-family residences or not. But, but in that area, if you just kind of look at the area, I got a sense it's more residential than retail.
As you get further down the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
16, 17, or 17, 19, I think those might be all different.
And across the street.
No, on the same side as...
Yeah, no, on the other side, it'd look residential.
Oh, sure, yes, right across the street.
Yeah. That's why I say, if you kind of stand in the middle of the street, right in front of this house and look around, you, you don't say, this is a retail area, what's that residence doing there? It's a residential area, not a retail.
Your, your part of this property is rest, is in Cerizo.
That's on the lower north buck house.
That's the rest of the red line there.
Right.
I still would quite have the, the existing arrangement. There's nine and 11 share a staircase, right?
Going up the other end.
Okay. And nine is on the west side, and 11 is on current east side. And they are two separate rentable...
Rentable.
Properties.
Correct.
And nine at the moment is not rented.
Right.
And 11 is.
Right.
And nine is not rented just, just because there's nobody in there. You tried to rent that.
I tried to rent for 10, yes.
Yeah.
Even when nobody, I used to own in Cerizo, I stood on the property there, and even then, I was trying to rent for 15. I had somebody as a computer.
It was called the student...
It was a learn computer. It was, you know, like 15, 16 hundred dollars. I never raised it. I was happy, too happy up there. Now you have a nobody. I mean, for the last 10 years, I got nobody to rent.
But what, what you're proposing is a, is a third residential space in, in the nine and 11 complex, is that right?
Correct, because it's downstairs, it's a bedroom, it's got a whole window, it's on fourth floor. It's got 10, eight windows it has. It's just a level. You didn't even know it's an apartment. You can use like two-bedroom apartment.
Now, is that, is this third residential space, potential residential space we're talking about, does that go all the way under nine and 11?
Under the nine, and yeah, a little bit under 11 too.
What's under 11 otherwise?
Uh, yeah, under 11, then yeah, it would be like the furnace and one bare room. So the whole, the whole place underneath could be from nine and 11 underneath.
That's what you're proposing, counselor, as a, as a third residence, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now, there's at least one rule in here that requires for each residential space that there be one and a half parking spaces. So if you were to succeed with this, you would need four and a half parking spaces. Where do you get that?
I don't have a parking. I mean, nobody, nobody down there, we have a parking. I mean, Blackout Street, I mean, all those condos there, nobody has a parking. Nobody. There's no parking down there.
The old, everybody's doing it to that, huh?
Everybody, everybody, even when I had the rest fund, it was, it was a tough time in that time, you know, to people parking out here. It's, I thought if I would stay there, I was going to bother parking because it was, you know, for some customer, just, you know, bring their car, but then where they go? You go around, you go to the post office on the end, and that's better. And we have a parking down below there, you know, but nobody has parking.
Okay, so that, the short answer is you're not going to be able to comply with that requirement?
No, no, not probably, no.
Okay. Look, the, the use variance criteria that the board has got to ask you to demonstrate are that you cannot realize a reasonable return, provided the lack of return is substantial as demonstrated by competent financial evidence. Now, I'm not saying anything has been said that is inaccurate, but we don't have competent financial evidence here. I mean, one of the reasons that this property could be empty on the bottom floor, or maybe even upstairs, is the amount of rent that is being asked. I mean, that's, every time you talk to a business owner, and they're, they're closing up 99% of the time, they said, rent just got too high. So I mean, that's a possibility. We, we just don't have anything on the record here one way or the other.
No, I understand. If we do adjourn and comply for the use variance, we would submit the information to the regular decision.
And the second criterion is that the hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. I'm not sure that's true. And the requested use variance of granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and as always, the alleged hardship has not been self-created. Now, I think simply, some of the area variance criteria are similar, but they're not the same. And in particular, the financial component is more specifically stressed here than it is under the area variance. So it seems to me that these are things, and you may think you've addressed one or more of these, but you certainly haven't addressed all of them yet. And I, I just, I mean, if I had to vote tonight, I would have to vote no, just because we haven't had a showing like that.
I understand that. We would like to adjourn so that we can submit more information.
You might get three yeses. These are very wondrous people.
Based on...
Him in particular, you're right to point that.
I'm scared to death of him, in fact.
You're what?
I'm scared to death of you.
Oh, yeah. See, much evidence of that over the years.
No, I think, I think that you, you need a use variance, is what I think. And you haven't made out the case for use variance. Without voting, I would agree with the chairman.
That's more than I usually get. So I, I mean, you know, it's your application, and I presume that there's not a eight-month-pregnant lady who needs to move in there right away or something like that. You would have led with that if that were the case, right?
Well, they, they may have to.
This is personal.
Doesn't come true, right?
True. Any other comments or questions? I am going to propose to recommend that we adjourn this. I would re-notice it. I know that's a little complication, a little expense, but it's well worth it. If anybody wanted to stop you from doing this, and there's nobody here, so that may not be a problem. But if anybody did, and it re-noticed the wrong way, you're just exposed. There's no reason to run that risk.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thoughts, Tom?
I agree, but I, in fact, I...
Okay, take that as a motion. Any opposition?
No.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
And August, you may see some of us, you may see many more, who knows?
Okay.
Thank you both.
Okay, thanks very much.
He emailed me yesterday. That could have been even worse. So the, the use variance criteria, they're extended including the zoning.
Yes.
We can all take a look between now and August.
I understand the, the language and the requirements, I just don't get the rationale.
Yeah, I'll ask about it.
Seems to me, why, why would anybody object to this becoming residential, except for the parking issue, but...
So here's what I can think of, because if you want to have a business district, you want to encourage more businesses, it brings more people to the business district. But I made that up.
Yeah, yeah, not, well, I think, I think that's probably what's driving it. That, that makes a certain amount of sense.
Right.
But that, I don't know.
So I'm thinking like the building that we did siding on, I don't remember that one.
I agree with you.
But wasn't, you know, wasn't that a completely, there's no businesses on the first floor that are there?
No. No, but there weren't before either. That's been a residential property going back some time. And I think that's the case for most of these properties.
And there are, there are other residential, purely residential properties.
There are, yeah. I mean...
Right, right in that area, that, I mean, as I said, you got a sense of more residential than...
Well, the comics was right across the street, I mean, from this property, well, up the street.
Yeah, and I guess he's had a brokerage or anything, he's in one of those, is that...
It's in the Miller Building. The brokerage is just north, just east of Buckout, right? On the north side?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. So that's, I mean, that's commercial?
Yes.
I think, I think they're, my impression is they're more commercial than there are, than there are residential. But I mean, it's definitely a mix, no question about that. But I, I don't, you know, if he actually did the count, I expect he's going to come back and have a map for us.
I, I didn't do a count, and I, it wasn't precise. I'm just saying my impression was standing right there. If you go up Main Street, it's clearly retail.
Right.
But, but standing right, right there, I just, I was surprised frankly how many residential, apparently, apparent residences there were.
Yeah, those two blocks, yeah.
And I, I think you're right about the rationale. I guess I just, I suppose I have a philosophical problem with... a philosophical problem with, with the government saying to somebody, you have to do this for reasons unrelated to what you're doing, because we want to, you know, we want some benefit for people other than, other than you.
Right.
Which, which you can disagree with.
Right. I mean, I guess you've, you've set, you've set the groundwork for your village, and then you build around it, and then you create otherwise, you wouldn't have a village, and then you might be bothered that we didn't have a village because everybody was building houses, I, I don't, I don't know what, I don't have a, haven't fully developed the philosophy yet, so I'm not taking this position on it.
Because you can tell I have another.
Totally different subject, 200 Mountain Road, I did not understand why it came off the agenda.
It came off the agenda, here's what happened, I got, I got all these papers, and, I mean, in history, I spent a good part of my time in Georgia reading all this stuff that had gone back 13 or 15 years, and, I mean, there were so many conditions to this, or we, we had 11, in Lou Ostenberger's opinion, and then when it came back, the planning board had added two, and we endorsed that, and, and the first issue, there was something in the application to us that said that we, the applicant, have already undertaken a number of works to comply with the conditions that were laid out, and that means we don't need a new variance. They said, that's an issue, and I understand what they're saying, I don't know what the law is on that issue one way or the other, so I asked Ed Maron to, he is actually Sarah, Sarah in the Village Florida, but I asked her to be in touch with both sides, the village and the applicant, and to have something to us by the 13th on that issue, and in addition, from the applicant, why they thought that they had done enough, but the facts were to support the view that they had done enough, so that they were in that position, and from the village that they had not done that, so that we could get some information about it. That led to, I had a conversation with Ed Maron, and he said, I don't know who's going to do this for the village, who's you call village attorney? And I did, and I said, you know, we just need something from you telling us what you believe the standards are. Then she talked to Ed, found out what had been done up there, and she was, she was one who wanted to send it here in the first place, and she was then satisfied that they had done enough so that they were compliant with that theory. That's why I got withdrawn. For me, what I found consistently to be the biggest issue, there, there are lots of environmental issues, but the installation of a sewer up there, which would benefit that property and surrounding property, seemed to be an enormous part of the overall benefit to the village that they saw, and I understood from Ed Maron that the reason this took 13 years was that 12 of the years were consumed getting the sewer easement, and actually getting approval of the sewer from other authorities, like the county, and that has just been achieved, so I think they probably have a pretty good argument anyway as to why they have that stuff to come out of the original work. And that's why it was good.
I'd be glad that it was, because you go to bed, you're up quite a late hour.
Interesting, Chuck E. Pitten's involved with that, and he also built nine-dash-11 in Main Street.
He did, he did. Came in, originally said, if you give me these variances, 200 Mountain Road, I could, I could sell it for 250, and the bill of sale was attached to the papers, he sold it for 395, so, good businessman.
Oh, yeah.